Okay, I have at seven o'clock we'll call this meeting to order. Be it resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711, one discussion consideration of or interviews of prospective candidates for employment assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public board. One New River Valley Regional Commission. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? Adam Clerkfield, please call the roll.
Mr. Ridzikowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Ms. Boone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Into closed meeting.
Do I have a motion to come out of closed meeting?
I move.
Second.
A motion in a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Mottz.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Certification of closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open public meetings required by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered by the Board. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Second.
A motion in a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Mottz.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Very good. At this time, I will ask Ms. Hill, our soon-to-be county administrator, if she will lead us to, in the moment of silence, in a pledge of allegiance.
Please rise as you're able, and then I'll lead us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. All right. Tonight, we have two public hearings. The first public hearing is a special use permit, short-term tourist rentals.
Mr. Sanders will present that for us tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Sanders.
Good evening, Board members. Thank you all for having me this evening. So, as Chair Blevins stated, the request before you this evening is a special use permit request for a short-term tourist rental at property located at 1950 Oilwell Road. Just to orient you, the property is located in the central portion of the county between the towns of Christiansburg and Blacksburg. This is Merrimack Road, and this is Oilwell Road. The property is located just a bit before the end of state maintenance on Oilwell Road. This is your aerial map of the property. You can see here Oilwell, and then the subject property here. The house sits approximately 100 feet from the front property line there along Oilwell Road. Further out, Oilwell in this direction, that's where you end state maintenance, and then there are some cell communication towers at the end of that road just to kind of orient you. This is your zoning map. You can see it's located in an area that's designated R1 Residential. We do have some R2 Residential here, and then the white area that you see surrounding is Agriculture A1. So, as you might remember, last summer, the Board approved changes to our short-term rental policies within the zoning ordinance, and all residential zone properties here in the county do require an approved special use permit to allow a short-term tourist rental. At that time, you also adopted several supplemental regulations that will also impact this proposal if it is approved. The applicant is an officer in the U.S. Army and does plan to retire in the county here in the next five to seven years. They currently live in the Williamsburg area, and until they can establish permanent residence here in the county, they want to utilize the property as a short-term tourist rental. As a reminder, there's the definition that was approved as part of those updates to the zoning ordinance last year. The thing to keep in mind with short-term tourist rentals that are a little bit different than bed and breakfast ends is that the applicant for a short-term tourist rental does not live on the same parcel or on an adjacent parcel. Here are those supplemental regulations that I was telling you about. You can see here, it deals with a variety of different issues relating to the septic permit, where people can park on the property, ensuring that the property boundaries are clearly noted so that there's no trespassing on adjacent property. There should be no signs identifying the property as a short-term rental. It shall meet all requirements of the Fire Prevention Code. A property management and an emergency evacuation plan should be submitted. They must have a copy of the noise ordinance posted for those that are staying in the rental. There should be connection to local phone service, and outdoor burning should be done in compliance with county code. Here are some photos of the property. Here is the house here, again about 100 feet from Oilwell Road. And this is looking on Oilwell down toward the end of state maintenance here on the left, and then back toward Merrimack Road here on the right. When staff evaluated the impacts, it was determined that the impacts to traffic would be minimal comparable to if the home was used as a long-term rental or if it was owner-occupied as a residence. There will be parking available for a maximum of four vehicles, and that would be allowed only in the driveway, so no parking in yards or out on Oilwell. VDOT did review the application and took no exception to the special use permit. The dwelling is served by private well and septic, so VDH would have to give their approval for the maximum occupancy of the property, and the applicant is proposing no additional lighting. In looking at noise safety and security, the owner does intend to utilize a property management company, Blue Ridge Escapes, to manage the rental for him since he's not in town. That entity would respond to all guest inquiries and issues, provide housekeeping and lawn care, respond to urgent repairs. Any adjacent property owner concerns would be addressed through that property management team. They will be installing closed-circuit television for the front porch to monitor entry and exit of all the guests. All renters are going to be required to fire, to follow the fire code and the burn laws, and then they will be prohibiting large parties, and negative reviews left for any renters will result in them not being able to rent from them again. Here's your comprehensive plan map. You can see that this is located in an area designated as residential transition. And then here are your comprehensive plan goals. With residential transition areas, we are looking at uses that are residential or compatible with residential, and staff in their analysis believes that this is compliant with the residential transition area. It does promote tourism in the area, bringing people in for events at Virginia Tech, Radford University, and our natural resources in the area. Again, entrepreneurial economy, this touches on your economic resources, and then it does preserve it as a residential structure if no other development on the property. So, the application that we have received from the applicant is in line with the intent of the short-term rental ordinance that was updated last year. The use does remain residential. It provides lodging for transient guests visiting the county, and those supplemental regulations which will be in effect will, again, help to lessen the impacts on adjacent property owners. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of the special use permit, and in addition to those supplemental regulations, they placed four conditions on the SUP application. Occupancy while using the property as a short-term tourist rental shall be limited to six people, and again, that's tied to their VDH approval. The property shall be registered with the Commissioner of Revenue's Office for meals and occupancy taxes. All applicable permits will be pulled from the Building Department, and all of those supplemental regulations which are in 10-41 subsection 6 shall be met. The commission vote on that was six to zero with three absent, and we did have no speakers at the public hearing. We did notify adjacent property owners in accordance with state code and the code of the county. A public hearing sign was placed on the property, ads run in the news messenger, and at this time, staff has received no inquiries or requests about this property, but additional comments may be received this evening. So, that's all I have for you. I'll take your questions. We do have the applicant, Mr. Sears, here as well if you have questions for him.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. We'll go around the room. Supervisor Shepherd.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Supervisor Bond.
No questions. Thank you.
Supervisor Demottz.
It's good to see you tonight.
Thank you.
Great presentation. I don't have any questions. Thank you. Very comprehensive.
Supervisor King.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Fidjikowski.
No questions.
Vice Chair Biggs.
The only question I had, what qualifies as a large party?
That would be a question for the applicant, so I will defer to him. I think that might be built in with Airbnb's rules, but he might have a specific number that he's thinking for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Feel free.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. I'll be honest, I'm not exactly sure, but I will, I'll look up Airbnb. I mean, in my mind, so the, basically, would be limited to six people. Obviously, the expectation is that people coming here might be parents or something like that, so they might have additional people come there, but, you know, 10 to 12, you know, it is, it is a large house, so it can host, easily host that, that number of people. The intent is not to have any kind of loud, you know, college frat party-type things, like, you know, absolutely not on that end, so any of that kind of stuff, would, you know, we'd leave negative reviews or something like that and make sure those, those people don't come back, if that makes sense. So, our goal is to protect our neighbors and, and make sure that it doesn't, that the area doesn't change for them.
Thank you. I was just thinking about Virginia Tech football weekends. That's what I was thinking.
Oh, right, yeah. Yeah, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
All right, good. Mr. Sanders, thank you for the presentation. I don't have any questions. Also, thanks, thank you to Ms. Hopkins for being here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
We will open up the public hearing for the special use permit for the short-term tourist rental. I do not have anyone sign up to speak, but if anyone in the audience would like to come forward, you have four minutes to speak on this issue, this public hearing. Seeing no one come forward, we will close that public hearing. Next public hearing, FY 2023-2024 budget amendment. And this is a resolution amending the budget by more than 1% of the total expenditures. This is the opportunity to allow citizens to have input on the school capital balance and the cap, school capital projects encumbrance, general fund balances, and the general fund encumbrances, and that is, is that total there? I will open this public hearing. I do not have anyone signed up on the sheet to speak, but if any citizen would like to come forward, they have four minutes to address the Board on this issue. Seeing no one come forward, we will close that public hearing. Public address. The Board of Supervisors allow citizens to present comments on issues deserving of their attention during public address. I don't have anyone signed up on the public address sheet, but if any citizen would like, they can come forward. They have four minutes to speak. Whether speaking as an individual or a representative, all comments must be directed to the chair or other supervisors from the speaker's lectern at the front of the room. Speakers will, may leave any written statements or comments to the supervisors with the board clerk. Speakers will be judged out of order should the speaker engage any personal attacks, use of profanity, or abusive language, or debate with the audience and not address the supervisors. When you come forward, you would need to state your name and your address, and you'll have four minutes. Seeing no one come forward, we will close public address. Addendum.
No addenda this evening, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to move into work session?
Motion.
Second.
A motion in a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Aye. Ms. Bone. Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We have, in the work session, legislative priorities.
And it is time again to review the legislative priorities, if you want to discuss those this evening, and then we can make some notes and bring a resolution back for you to take action on at the next meeting. We need to get that wrapped up in whatever kind of printing we're going to do by the end of October so that we can send those on to VACO, and I have some examples of what other localities have provided as far as priorities, and these are the ones that we did a few years ago, so we have some different choices that we can look at as well.
We'll open up for comments or discussion.
I like the, I like what we did a couple of years ago. If we can do that again, that'd be great.
Matt.
Orson.
Okay. Any discussion there?
I would, I would agree with that.
Do we just want to go down the list of last years and see if there are edits or, or additions, or things we might want to include or change?
I can, I, I fully support and fully agree with all of our legislative priorities, except for the final legislative priority under education. Support school vouchers or tuition tax credit for elementary and secondary students who attend private and home schools. Provide public school students with a voucher or tax credit to be spent on private school or home school tuition. As in the previous two years, if that remains on our legislative agenda, I will vote against our legislative priorities.
I will too.
So, the only, I don't have any suggested changes to anything else, just I would like to see that one item eliminated.
Vice Chair Biggs.
I'm in total agreement with that, and if you haven't had a chance, the J-Lark Committee came out with a report on the funding that the General Assembly provides for public education. The report is not a good report as far as what the state has been doing, and it looks like, based on the average, we're $1,900 below what other states provide, including states surrounding us, and one of them was West Virginia. So, I would, I would think that maybe if you haven't had a chance to look at that study, you might want to look at that study, and under education where we have recognizing the state's role in funding quality education, we might want to add a little asterisk there about the J-Lark study, depending like if you guys have a chance to look at it, because they finally come out and they're holding these folks a cannibal, and one of the things that they found is, you know, they're basing the funding on staffing instead of actual number of students like other states do, so they're looking at or recommending that maybe the funding formula needs to be looked at for education in the state. So, as you know, the J-Lark, they're an independent body that the General Assembly can ask to do studies, so it also is upsetting to me that we have money still sitting in Richmond that's not being given out to public schools to help with the needs and the teacher salaries. So, if you have a chance to look at that study and you feel like you would, you know, want to add like a little comment there, I would recommend that, and that's, and I agree with all the other stuff, but I can't sign on because of the, the fourth that supports school vouchers or tuition tax credit, and that especially since we're not even funding what we should be funding in public education, and we know for a fact that if we start funding school vouchers and tuition tax credits, it's going to come out of the very money that we're not funding public schools with now. So, that, I'll get off my soapbox because you guys have heard it before, but I just wanted to make that known.
Supervisor King.
Well, I voted for the tax credit or the vouchers, and I'm just a firm believer in parents ought to have a choice where they, how and where they educate their kids at.
Supervisor Fidjikowski.
Yeah, I appreciate Supervisor Biggs bringing up the fact that our surplus in Virginia has gone from, I think it was 3.6 billion to 5.1 or 5.3 billion dollars, and I think there's room in that kind of money to do both. I'm definitely in favor of supporting the school vouchers or tuition tax credit, because we have gotten to the point, not just in the state and country, that parents need to have some choices, because some of them are being basically told, you have to do it our way or no way, and I think they need to have a choice, so I'm definitely in favor of it. And I also would like to add, and I don't know if this is the place to do it, but I had a request from a police officer with a canine that had been retired, and he was required to go ahead and buy the And he was required to go ahead and buy the licenses for that retired police canine that he was going to adopt and take care of. And he was wondering if something could be done to eliminate that requirement, not just for police canines, but also for military canines. And we have quite a few here in Virginia. I, I spoke to our county attorney about that, and he said that would have to be done at the state level to provide that exemption. And I'm not really sure what category that would fall under. Definitely not education or broadband, but somewhere in the middle there. I would like to see that, if that's something everybody would be in favor of putting on. Not that I want to make our legislative list longer, but I think that is a pretty good request. And I think it's an easy one to be done. That's all I got.
Supervisor Shepherd?
I would be in favor of the license for the canines, absolutely. And I'm, I'm for the vouchers, because I think parents need to have a choice of how their kids are educated and where they go.
Can I add? I just want to add that if you would like to look up that J-LARC study, you just go to J-LARC, which is J-L-A-R-C dot Virginia dot gov, and go to the button that says Virginia's K through 12 Funding Formula Link, and you can get the whole study there. And in, in regards to parents having a choice, they do have a choice. They can send their children to private school now. So I would just add that, and then I'll be quiet.
Thank you. Vice Chair Biggs? I too have supported and will continue to support school vouchers or tuition tax credit. I do believe parents should have a choice to be, and I think this is one way that they have that choice to do that. There's a lot of frustration with parents in our school systems right now, and this just gives them another opportunity and a choice. I also would like to, and we're, this comes up later on in, on the agenda tonight, but also to think about Line of Duty Act for private police officers, if we would support that. And that is for accredited police departments that are private, that serve and have the same authority as officers in a sheriff's or town police, but they are not covered since they do work for a private company in the Line of Duty Act, which means if they're killed in the line of duty, they do not, are not afforded those benefits. So that's something I would like to look at. There's also a change of the safe haven law that I'd like us to look at too. We had something with our local Department of Social Services, and I'd look, like to look at legislation that way, that would protect, protect a child and look at that, wording of that to be a little bit different. But I think, I don't know if that fits into here or something we're going to take up with our local representatives, but that's something that I believe would have a lot of support as well. Any further discussion? Supervisor Demonts?
Just a question, and I don't object to the Line of Duty Act at all. Do we have any private police agencies in Montgomery County?
Corrigan Clinic.
So it's not like private security that businesses would have?
Correct. It's accredited police department that-
Credit, so they would go through all the-
DOJ.
-training and everything that regular police officers do.
That is correct.
And then would that then fall under, like depending on the locality that they're located in, it would fall under, the locality would have the responsibility then to pay the out if something were to happen?
This is a state, as I understand, this is a state benefit.
It does, it is a state benefit, but the county is self-insured for that, so the state determines what line of duty benefits come into play and whether or not a death is related to line of duty. So they evaluate that, and then the county does fund that.
And so we would have to make sure that we would have enough money in our fund if we were to go that route?
That's correct.
But I thought we was asking the state to do it. That's what Steve said, asked the state to do it.
That's what I-
We can look into that more. It's to let them be eligible in the program, which it's a state program, but the county funds our portion of it. The other way the county can fund it is to pay premiums into the state Line of Duty Act. But there's a possibility that it would be the private company that would pay for that, for their employees, so we can look into that.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, because it, it all comes down again to the locality. It's not like the state is paying when something happens.
I know they don't pay now, but I thought what Steve was asking for the state to divvy up. They got five billion dollars.
That's my understanding too, but-
To allow them to be in the program and to provide the funding.
Correct.
So what, so what is the, the relationship between the county and the state when it comes to that? The state, I thought, had a set level of, was it a hundred thousand?
They define the benefits, that is in the Code of Virginia, and the state, there's a state agency that evaluates the claim to see if it's covered under line of duty or not, but then the county has to provide the funding for the claim.
So the state doesn't pay anything?
No.
And so that's why you always want to have, like, your reserve or whatever you might want to call that, you always sort of need to look at that, because God forbid, if you had a terrible thing happen and you had, you know, some folks that didn't make it through, you know, it, it could be very costly, so.
Yeah, but I think that's, I mean, it doesn't, thank goodness, it's rare to happen. And even in light of that, I'd still be in favor of it, because these are police officers. They assist our police officers. They do everything that other officers do.
And they take the training and everything.
That's right.
They're certified.
Certified, yes.
That's what makes-
So I'd still be in favor of it.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Do I have a motion to come out of work session?
I have a couple more.
I'm sorry. Supervisor Bowen?
I just want to make sure that the planning department had a chance to look at the, the language for the smart scale bullet. Because we have won a smart scale, maybe there's something different that we need to put in the language to make sure. Have they already reviewed it?
I don't know if they have or not, but we will follow up with them and-
Appreciate that.
Bring that back to you. We can email you and let you know.
Okay.
Well, well, isn't it true, though, that there's not enough money in the smart scale to meet the needs that the localities have? And it pits locality against locality in a competition, and I think that that needs to be looked at.
And heavily weights, based on death or injury versus any other-
Preventative.
Yeah, preventative. So the weight is placed on, more people have died on this road, therefore we will fix it, not, we can prevent death, therefore we should fix it.
We can look at that and bring something for you to the next meeting.
Thanks. And then the constituent asked me to, now that COVID's behind us and people work differently, counselors or psychiatrists had, while the pandemic was going on, as well as physicians, were doing virtual appointments. Surrounding states like North Carolina, counselors can actually do business in the state of Virginia, but counselors can't do business in other states. So I'd like the General Assembly to approve counselors, physicians to be able to do business outside of the state.
Do you mean virtually?
Yeah. You know, there's some things that the physician's not going to be able to do, but sometimes there's maintenance appointments that, you know.
Yeah, I'm thinking of like-
But counselors, it's very, you know, a lot of people go virtual.
I'm thinking of college students when they come, so I'm, I moved some people in from South Carolina and Tennessee today, so if they had an established relationship-
Right.
What you're saying is currently their established relationship with a counselor or a doctor from South Carolina would not be recognized in a virtual visit in Virginia?
What I'm saying, for example, I know that North Carolina counselors and psychologists can do business with people who are in, physically in Virginia, but Virginian counselors cannot do business in other states.
Gotcha.
Anyone else? Any other comments, follow-up? Supervisor Fidjikowski?
Yeah, so I'm thinking, is, is there a reason for that? I mean, I, I mean, I, I think for an example, concealed weapon permits. Some states don't recognize ours, we don't recognize theirs. So would this be a, a condition of maybe, for, for your example, that North Carolina doesn't want our counselors doing that?
I can't imagine. I mean, I would think that it could be reciprocal, but I don't think that the General Assembly has ever considered it.
Yeah.
Or, you know, tried to figure out how to make our counselors and physicians more profitable by doing business outside of Virginia. I think there's some tax revenue opportunities there, actually, and, and people building their businesses.
I think that would be fair.
And gosh forbid, you know, their, their clients are traveling on vacation, and they'd like to have a, if they have a, you know, whatever. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion to come out of work session?
Motion.
Second. Motion and a second? Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demonts?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. Items of consent.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second? Do I have any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demonts?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. Old business, emergency services, one-time cost.
I have an update about that. Last time that was on the agenda as well, and there were a couple of questions that came up, so we wanted to bring that back to you with the responses for that. There were two items that came up that were questioned. One of them was about ballistic vests, and I just wanted to let you know that this resolution would provide funding for five ballistic vests. They would be with the vehicle, so two would be with each ambulance, and then one would be with the EMS captain's vehicle. And then the dual-certified gear, it is not fire-rated turnout gear. It would not be certified for structural firefighting or proximity firefighting. The purpose of that gear is to provide safety for our employees if they have to help provide pre-hospital care to a patient before they're extricated from a vehicle. So it would provide an additional layer of protection for them against sharp edges, broken glass, that kind of thing. And it would also help them at the scene of a fire, if pre-hospital care was required at the scene of a fire, not to go into the fire, but to provide that care to keep them a little safer as well at high, high-hazard scenes. So I understand that there was some discussion of that at the Fire and Rescue Commission last week, and there was support from that group for this. And I just wanted to say that we really, we value these employees, and we want to take care of them as best we can. We know that several agencies in the county do have this equipment for their volunteers, and if there are other agencies that do not have it and they feel like they need it, they could certainly make a request from the county for that. We value the volunteers as well and want to make sure that everybody can be as safe as possible.
Supervisor Fidjikowski? You serve on that committee?
Yes, and I was there and there was, the chief of Fire and EMS for Christiansburg told the story of, they were doing some training recently in extrication, and one of the EMS personnel went into the vehicle during the training, and as she was getting out, she hit a jagged piece of metal and, and cut herself pretty, pretty badly. And that's just in the training. And everybody there basically said the same thing that Ms. Hill just mentioned, that there is no layer of fire protection in the, what did we call that?
Dual-certified.
Yeah, dual-certified, yeah. So they, they really can't go into fires with it, because it doesn't have that layer. But it would prevent something like a sharp metal or glass from injuring somebody, so I think it's a good piece of safety equipment. And of course, ballistic vest, I, I don't think that, really have to think too hard about that, if they responding with police in a, in a situation where there's maybe an active shooter, but they need to get to somebody, that's just a no-brainer to me. So I think this is good safety equipment, and it, it was looked at very favorably. And I know at least one other agency there said, yes, we keep them in our ambulance, so others are using it.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second? Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. On these vests, before we vote on this, I'm all for it. I'm not going to vote against it. But I'd also like to put in there, to put five in here for long shot, fire and rescue, and five for runner rescue.
Could that be something that we could not add, but add on the agenda? First of all, do we know if those agencies, they don't have them?
That's my understanding.
Can we make sure of that? And then how?
I was going to say maybe you ought to check and just see, make sure who has it and who doesn't.
That's what I-
If they don't have them, I'm absolutely in favor of adding them.
We need to make sure everyone has them.
Absolutely.
But how do we find out if everyone?
We can find out. Michael Geary can help us find out. If we want to, if you want to include that in the resolution, we could do that. The cost for 10 additional would be $6,700. We could add that to the appropriation tonight, or I can bring it to you next time, whichever you prefer.
Let's, let's add it tonight, so it's there.
If they don't have them.
Yeah. I have a question, and I'm looking at everybody but myself that might know the answer to this. A ballistics vest is a bulletproof vest, correct? And I'm thinking, I'm trying to say this very delicately, a, a female and a male might have different ballistics vest needs. Is that something that we should be taking into consideration?
We'll ask Brad.
That's a good point.
Yeah, and I just think that we would wear them differently.
Good evening, Mr. St. Clair.
Good question. For concealable body armor, absolutely. It's made to go under your clothing, and it fits, and it's, you're measured, and it's kind of a custom-fit type thing. These are more outer-layer body armor, so they're more universal fit. The ones that we're looking at for EMS would be more of a universal fit, they kind of size out. The big thing there is they would be labeled blue with some EMS. That helps law enforcement as well, when they see somebody on scene to know, identify, hey, this is EMS, if they need to direct them somewhere to help someone that's down. So there's a lot of value in them.
Okay. I think that answers that question.
And does that, when we add this, will that cover everyone to make sure that all of our-
It should cover all of the EMS agencies, is that correct?
Yes, if, if we add this, from my understanding, I spoke with several, several already have them and have just implemented them recently, and so I believe if we add this for our staff as well as the other two volunteer agencies, it should cover most folks across the county in some fashion. May not be that everybody has their own vest, but there will be a vest available on that ambulance for them to use if they go into that situation.
Okay. Thank you, mister. Does anyone else have any questions?
Just one more thing.
Supervisor King?
On the $89,733 for medical supply and pharmacy, was a, was there any in their budget this year for medical supplies?
I believe there are funds in the budget this year for medical supplies. We had to get additional supplies, because it is the first year of startup. Once it gets onto a regular cycle, then we won't have to come back with additional requests like this.
Remember you saying eighty-nine, almost ninety thousand dollars? How much was in their budget to start with?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can find out for you.
All right, thank you.
All right, so do I need to make an amendment? All right, so do I need to make an amendment or add to that motion that we're going to add, and the total would be a hundred and forty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-eight? Who made that motion?
I did.
You didn't.
And I'm happy with that amendment.
Okay, all right. New motion and second, Mr. King?
Second.
Okay.
That is if they need it.
Right.
Right. We'll go ahead and make sure everybody's covered. All right, any further discussion? Very good. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Chair Blavens?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
New business, vessel use permit, short-term tourist rental. So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Chair Blavens?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, school capital fund and incumbents over, I'm sorry, carryover. So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Mr. King?
I'd like to ask one question about the, uh, fire sprinkler in Shawville.
Okay. The sprinklers, you mean like what the state is, how, how they're coming along? Yeah.
Dr. Breagan? Yes, thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. Um, that's an ongoing project, and the last where we left off with that fire suppression system in Eastern Montgomery Elementary School was they had to test it, a monthly test for what the rate would be. Off the top of my head, I don't know if that's completed exactly or what that would be. That's what we're waiting on, that was, um, this has been frustrating for me as well. I know Supervisor King's been working closely on that, too. Um, and, um, I don't have those results yet for you. But the design went out and all that, we're ready to go. We had to get it, the line had to be tested, I believe, for a month to make sure the pressure was at the specific level. I don't remember what that number was.
I know, I know the last meeting we had down there, when all of us were together, we, we all decided to put the pump outside.
Correct.
Is that the route you're going?
Yes.
So the pump will be outside?
I believe that, you know what? Don't hold me to that. Let me double-check before I confirm that. I know Dr. Whittaker was working closely on that, she couldn't be here. We had the design and everything's done, where we left off last was they were testing, and it had to be a month-long test. That's the last that I remember, the information I had on that.
I know, like I said, the last meeting we had down there, everybody decided that'd be the best route to go and put it enclosed outside. If you had any more problem, you'd go in there and tweak the pressure on it.
I don't want to say yes without being a hundred percent sure, Supervisor King, but I'll find out and I'll email everyone tomorrow.
All right, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
King?
Yeah, just a, yeah, quick follow-up. So the pump and the tank is in place, and now it's just going through testing?
It's not in place yet, no, that's not, it's not done yet. We had to make sure, um, with the design phase, that it could sustain for a one-month period of time, I believe, was what the pressure would be. And I believe that came from the fire marshal, who said we had to make sure we had that done. It's not in place yet.
I think if you, we put that, or if y'all put that one outside, you don't need a tank, is that correct?
You're asking me specific, Supervisor King, I, I can't speak to. I, I can get you all an update tomorrow, an email, rather than say something that I'm not sure of.
Yeah, and if you would, check to see if you have that equipment in hand, too.
I definitely, I'll give an update tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
And Dr. Breagan, to follow up on that same top, topic, until it's fixed, we still have fire watchers?
Correct.
Okay, all right, very good. Any other follow-up questions?
I just think you, you brought that up, too, Supervisor King, because school's going to be starting pretty soon, right? You were concerned about it.
Yeah, I thought we was going to already have that thing up and running.
You and me both.
So we, we'd appreciate just an update on that, hopefully we can get.
I'll get it tomorrow.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And currently, because of the fire sprinkler system, the gyms aren't being able to be used outside for outside sports groups.
That's correct.
So I know we want to get that fixed, because a lot, a lot of families in Eastern Montgomery that want to utilize those gyms.
Agreed.
All right, very good. Um, I just had one question, I don't really know if it's, just to make sure, that ninety-one thousand seven hundred ninety-seven, ninety-one million seven hundred ninety-seven one hundred and fifty-six, that includes the ninety million that we have borrowed for Christiansburg High School?
That's correct.
Correct, all right. And that, and we are still currently at capacity to borrow?
Yes, for debt, our debt service capacity, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, and we're still getting bids?
We're opening that bid tomorrow.
Opening the bids tomorrow, okay, all right, very good.
Fingers crossed.
All right, thank you, Dr. Breagan. Any other follow-up questions?
Now, just one thing to remind everybody, if they use the pennies that we put back for maintenance and all this, if something happens, there's not going to be any more money. Is that correct?
That is correct. If they use all of the pennies that are set aside in the capital fund?
For this budget.
For this project, there would not be additional funds for other items that might occur.
And am I correct on the ninety million that we borrowed more than a year ago? We're not paying any interest or penalties?
We're not paying penalties, we do accrue interest, but it doesn't, um, it doesn't cost us more interest because we haven't spent the money yet. There are arbitrage requirements with the Internal Revenue Service about calculating how much income we earn on interest compared to how much we pay. It's, it would be better to spend the funds sooner because they are tax-exempt funds, they need to be spent on a project, because we should not borrow the funds before the projects are ready to proceed. There's not a risk at this time that anything will, will occur from that, but we do need to move forward as quickly as we can.
I'm sure Dr. Breagan wants to move as quickly as possible as well, for our Christiansburg families, okay?
But we're always excited that we can borrow at a lower rate, which is what we did. Yes, that is right.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Dr. Breagan.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Blavens?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
FY twenty-three year-end grant balances and incumbences carryover?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, do I have any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Chair Blavens?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Except, um, Ms. Vicki, you put all the, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, very good, all right. Request General Assembly amendment to the Line of Duty Act, private police departments.
So moved, second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Just like to say that I support this. My husband is one of these private police, retired from state police and now works at Corollian Clinic. Um, and so he would fall in that category. And just recently, we did have this amendment is to honor the Wintergreen Police Department Officer Mark Christopher Wagner, who lost his life on June sixteenth in the line of duty. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Blavens?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, County Administrator, Mrs. Hill?
I do have a short report. Um, I just wanted to share that two Fridays ago, we had an employee engagement committee outing at the Pulaski Baseball Field. It was a great turnout, we had a really great time. That committee is employee run, they, um, come up with all the ideas and organize all that, and it was a really great turnout from a lot of different departments. We enjoyed that a lot. The Deputy County Administrator job ad has been posted, and it closes a week from today. So I'm looking forward to reviewing those applications as they come in. I think Vicki mentioned to several of you this evening, if you're planning to attend the VACO conference in November, we need to know that as soon as we can. And then finally, I wanted to give a little update about the broadband project in Eastern Montgomery. We've been working and communicating regularly with GigaBeam and AEP about the project and how it's progressing. And I understand, I have not seen this for myself, but I understand that they have started work in eastern part of the county, so we're really excited about that. That's all I have, thank you.
Very good. Supervisor DeMottz?
I have no report, thank you.
Supervisor Bowen?
Um, the only thing I want to announce is that stepping out is in a couple of weeks, and we don't have another meeting before that happens, so please have a great time participating.
Supervisor Shepard?
No report.
Supervisor Fidjikowski?
Yeah, um, as a matter of fact, when it comes to broadband, I received a call from a citizen, as I frequently do when it comes to broadband. And I explained to him, um, what I knew about it, which was pretty much, uh, we're hoping to get the first VATI grant done by the end of the year. And, uh, he thanked me and hung up, and about two hours later, he called me back, he said, I've already seen the, uh, people working on the lines and running the, uh, the, uh, fiber, so, uh, I thought that was pretty good, so that's very, very encouraging.
We have encouraged them to, um, drive trucks that say GigaBeam on the side, so people know who they are.
Yeah, maybe, you know, cover them with Christmas lights or something else, just to, so that people will understand, but, uh, um, I wanted to do a little quick update on the meeting that we had with the, um, the Fire and EMS Commission. I had mentioned to them, um, what we had talked about at our last meeting, about the interest in maybe having someone from the committee that picks out the equipment. Um, you know, we had the two trucks that we approved, the transfer of money, um, and they were, they seemed to, uh, think that's, that was a good idea. I told them, not just for our board to understand how the process works and why those trucks were, were selected, but it's also good for the citizens to hear that, too. Citizens, I'm sure, are curious as to, uh, where this expensive equipment is going and why it's needed, so, uh, that, that seemed to be readily accepted. I also mentioned the ISO ratings, and since then, I think we've gotten a lot, a lot more information on the ISO ratings. And some of the information, I think that I gave you, which was from a meeting probably twenty-five, thirty years ago, involving, um, one of our EMS chiefs that has since passed on, but, uh, and he's the one that had told us, or the group at the time, about the, the age of the vehicles. Well, apparently that is not currently a requirement for these ISO ratings, so I guess as long as the equipment is in good working order, that suffices. But, uh, um, that was something that I didn't realize had changed, and, uh, change is inevitable in everything, so, uh, that's, uh, that was my mistake. Uh, but I did share with them, um, the fact that, um, we are not transitioning to paid staff in this county. We are filling gaps, that's what we're doing. And they seem to understand that, and several of them spoke up and talked about how, uh, working with the, um, uh, the mutual aid that they have, the agreements, and how that works, and how that covers the county and our citizens, it protects them, um, and how well it worked, and how well they work together. Uh, I, that was very, very encouraging to me, um, because I brought up the fact that we are getting, you know, this feedback, or at least I am, um, I, I think several of you are, on rumors that are floating around, that people think that our goal is to transition from volunteer to, uh, paid staff, and that is, couldn't be further from the truth. We love our volunteers, they have kept this county going for many, many years, and we only want to keep our citizens safe, so the only time that we will ever bring in paid staff is to cover the gaps that are out there. And, um, many of them seem to understand that. Um, heard from, uh, Reiner Rescue, that, uh, they apparently are looking at some, uh, paramedics, and may have one, I think, on their, in their squad, but due to work requirements, apparently, uh, that person's not able to fulfill that duty. And I said, until that happens, we're going to have to keep a paramedic there in Reiner twenty-four hours a day, but it was very encouraging. I asked if there was, um, maybe any, um, others that were close to getting their, uh, paramedic certification, and apparently there is one. So, uh, they're doing their, whatever training they're, they're doing with Blacksburg, because they get so many more calls in that category of paramedic. So I thought that was, uh, I thought that was very good, and it was, it was really good fear, uh, feedback from them. And, you know, I went over some of the, some of the rumors that, you know, that we were hearing, and one of them was, when we first started hiring EMS, we, we put in the job description that fire training was preferred. And I think a lot of people took that to mean we are hiring only dual-qualified EMS personnel. And that is not the reason. And I had, uh, Mr. St. Clair there, and he explained to, uh, the crowd why that was added. It has nothing to do with working them in as fire, even though, um, I know Elliston Fire Department, since they have, uh, our paid EMS in their station, has been able to actually utilize them in, in certain calls. Not, not on a regular basis, but every once in a while, so it was a benefit to them, but that was not the purpose of it. It had to do with the, uh, scheduling. They work on a twenty-four-hour schedule, something I would never try, but, uh, they do, and they needed to have that additional certification in order to do that type of scheduling. And Brad helped me out here if I'm missing something else, pretty much yet. And then I mentioned the, also, the, um, when we changed the bylaws, um, for the Fire and EMS Commission, we all voted on that, um, a couple of meetings back, and of course, the Fire and EMS Commission voted for that also. And of course, the purpose of that, the, the purpose of, of changing the words volunteer rescue squads to EMS is because we now have paid EMS that are part of that commission, and they're represented by Brandon, um, so they have a vote, um, in there. So it's, it would, wouldn't be fair to them to say just volunteers, because now it's EMS which covers volunteers and the paid staff. So, uh, we talked about that, and then we, we talked about also the gear, and that's why I brought up the fact that, um, the chief had told, told us that, uh, incident on where that would have been very helpful to have, and then others said that they, they actually had that equipment in their vehicles, so, um, and I also asked them if, if they could name another county that takes care of their volunteers the way we do. And there was tremendous amount of support, saying that we have the best equipment around, um, and we do the things, we look out for our volunteers, where other counties, and I'm talking about counties very close to us, that aren't able to do that. But because we set aside money specifically for equipment, we're able to keep up with that, and, um, many of them agreed to that, too. And I, and I reminded them that if they ever have any suggestions that, um, that the county We talked about the fact that there are certain areas in our county, and Justin, if he isn't gone, he probably would agree, that are selected for growth. And when you have growth and you have more people, you're going to have more calls. So it may come to the, to the point where we're going to have to really expand and for them to bring in more volunteers would be wonderful. So if they have suggestions that would help with that, we, we need to know it so that we can assist them in that. I remember some years ago, there actually was two departments that rented a big billboard on Route eleven. I thought that was, that's a pretty clever idea, but I don't know how well it worked. I know they picked up a couple of volunteers from it, but again, whatever suggestion they have, if not been tried, if it's something that we can work with, we would love to do that. And that seemed to be well-received, so. It was a very, very good meeting, a lot of conversation back and forth, which for those of you that don't go to those meetings, that doesn't happen a lot. So it was, that's something we really enjoyed. Everybody got to throw their two cents worth in, so that's my report, thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Well, thank you for that report. Just to, for people that might not know all the acronyms, could you say, tell them what ISO stands for?
No, I can't.
Okay.
It's insurance, help me out.
It's not international standards?
No, it's Insurance Services Office.
There you go, see? Insurance, I knew it was insurance.
Yeah, all I knew was something with insurance, but I didn't know what, okay, thanks. Well, I just wanted to shout out to the employee, the employee engagement committee that they have a new project they're working on, partnering with the Animal Care and Doption Center to encourage employees to take the training to volunteer, to work with the animals, whether it be dog walking or interfacing with the cats there. So I just wanted to shout out a big thank you to the committee for doing that. And that's all I have.
Very good. I also would like to thank the employee engagement committee. It was great to be at the Pulaski River Turtles game and just, and that committee actually won a, was it VACO award?
It was a NACO.
NACO award, NACO award for their, for their participation, engagement with employees, so congratulations on that. Reminder, Race for Ace coming up August the fifth, is that correct, the Saturday? So make sure you register for that, I think it's the fifth?
Yeah, any donations?
Absolutely, Race for Ace. And congratulations to our, to our heroes, our volunteer and paid EMS and for the guns and hoses for the Special Olympics that occurred this past Saturday, congratulations. Ultimately, the winners are the Special Olympic group, so we appreciate their contributions. Supervisor Fidzikowski, thank you for that report. It's, it's interesting to hear that the age of the vehicle is not a factor in that. So that's something, and that would be great if the, for information, I think we've asked for the bylaws for the Fire and Rescue Commission, so we have a better understanding or explanation of the equipment. That would be great if they would start presenting that to us, that we have, and our citizens would know as well. And it's very encouraging, again, to hear that our volunteer and paid EMS services are understanding and working together for mutual aid. And it's just, as we grow, we need to be able to provide the best services for our citizens and, and it's, and again, we have suggestions for recruitment and retention because we, just nationally, there's a shortage of volunteers. And I'm glad to hear that they have some possible paramedic in the works. And until then, we do have our paramedics that are there and that's great for Reiner and Supervisor King, that you're able, that we're able to provide those services to those citizens twenty-four hours, seven days a week, that we do have paid paramedic and EMT to be able to respond and fill in those gaps, so that is, that's wonderful news. Any other follow-ups?
Just that, to follow up. Nine AM, at, sorry. It's Saturday, August fifth, nine AM, the Race for Ace at Blacksburg High School.
Very good.
Everybody has that.
I got just a little bit to say.
Yes.
You forgot me.
Oh, Supervisor King, I apologize.
And as, as Steve said about the volunteers, this, that and the other, I keep eye on the county website, on hiring. Not only me, but other citizens do too. So I get up one morning, I see it, big bold letters, firefighter, before they even said anything about EMS. So I called Craig that morning, correct me if I'm wrong, and asked him, what the heck? He said, let me check on it, I'll get back with you. And it was taken down. That's why not only me, but other volunteers see this.
As I shared with you that day as well Supervisor King, that was an error on our part internally and I understand the look and it's not good. And we corrected it as soon as you pointed it out to us, that was not our intention. It should not have been posted like that. We are not hiring paid firefighters.
Well, that, that, with all due respect, you're sitting here, not you.
I understand.
Whoever's sitting here putting this up, they see it before they hit that button.
So it sounds like it was a mistake and it was corrected? And to clarify?
How was it even put up there to start with? You can't mistake that. That is why rumors get started.
A lot of people are not familiar with things and the department that posted that
was not the EMS department.
I didn't say who it was, I didn't say that.
It was just posted, it's not going to happen again, I can assure you of that.
Well, as a former teacher, what I would say is that we all learn from our mistakes. And this was a big mistake and it probably will not happen again because there's probably a check and balance now, so that won't happen.
It probably won't happen again, but I'm going to say this for the last time, it was in big bold letters.
And otherwise, it was a big bold mistake.
That couldn't be a mistake. And then, one more thing, and I did vote for the vest tonight and we need to make sure everybody's safe. But I, I don't know if everybody understands how this work, I'm sure Steve and Daryl does. When you get sent off for a call, dispatch does a wonderful job. They'll tell you the call and then they'll tell you to stage. They'll tell you to stage in the area, don't go on the scene. We have wonderful law enforcement, Sheriff's Department, both towns. They're going to make sure the scene is safe before we go there. And sometimes, things will happen. But dispatch will always tell us, stage. And then when you get en route, they repeat theirselves. This is what's going on, stage in this area. They, nine-one-one dispatch does a wonderful job and so does law enforcement. And I do appreciate both of them.
Supervisor King, I apologize for skipping right over you, I'm sorry about that. No, no.
It was just a mistake.
Yes, and see, I just made a mistake and you quickly caught me on it and now it's corrected and I'll be more mindful next time, but?
It's all right, I know I'm poor.
So again, just to address that, if there are rumors out there, please come to leadership, come to any of the supervisors or the county administrator, so we can clarify that we don't want any misinformation out there. Of course, we can't control rumors, but we can, if you want to know the truth, that was a mistake for the ad. You quickly caught it, we quickly corrected it, we will have checks and balance to make sure mistakes like that don't happen again, but we are not hiring paid firefighters. And so the reason we went to some paid EMS is just basically because of the need. And as our county grows, there are needs and just a lack of volunteers.
That's why I asked for a committee, we can nip all this in the bud.
Good, and with that being said, we stand adjourned, thank you.